Six o'clock, so I'd like to open up the meeting. And then I have one adjustment to the agenda. The town office received a letter from the Department of Commerce, from the Census Bureau, about collecting, having the town help them collect that on new construction in town, which is something that Laura would be able to do for us. So, we just, I just want to add to the agenda to see if we think it's a good idea to do.
Did I, did you get my email about what I wanted to talk about? The school, no, the school notice?
Yeah.
Can I do that under the clerk's report?
Yeah, I've got it written down.
Okay.
So, what Diana was just mentioning is to send out a notice to residents in town about the next school vote, which is June 25th for the Articles of Union.
Yeah.
See if we can get a little better turnout than last time.
Yeah, it was pretty low everywhere.
Yep. And that's pretty mu, and do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, so we're good there. Any public comment? So, I would make a motion that we approve the bills for the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for the May 29th meeting. That's been written.
I'll second those as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, let's see. Approved. Yes. Six, ten, twenty. Alright, so I'll give those to Diana so that we don't, okay. I usually pack them away and then find them two weeks later.
Nope.
Okay, town highway report. Do you want to just kind of give us a synopsis on what you guys have been up to?
I'm not sure if I brought my book again. Freddie, he took the grader down there, he retired, and he picked that up today.
He put his tires?
Some of those are gone.
They've been working on.
The rest of the day today. Then that little loader, me and Timmy, the loader, you know, he'd go ahead of me and I'd get all the berms and stuff off the head.
Uh-huh.
Get rid of seven or eight loads of that stuff.
What road was that really?
East Hill.
East Hill?
Sand Hill.
Sand Hill, okay, yep.
Darren Gregg was out with the grader on Dog Pond.
I thought he was on vacation.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, today was his last day.
Okay.
You're gonna have somebody else sit in the grader?
Yeah, I'm thinking of putting Peter in it and let him drive it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea, just to keep it going.
He's been with Greg a couple of days.
Yeah, he's ridden shotgun a couple times.
Tomorrow, it's supposed to rain, so I may go with him tomorrow.
Yeah.
A little bit longer, too, I'll stay in probably.
Yeah, good, you'd have to get somebody else.
And when is this supposed to be good day? Ever where's Road, I drove around there.
Did you get your land information about that?
Ever where's Road, over at Cranberry Meadow, of course, we didn't get a chance to finish.
Finish.
But, so, we'll send him out there when today.
Greg has been ditching a good part of Cranberry Meadow Road, especially though, you know, those spots where there's always like a little pool of water in the road with the ledges really tight?
Yeah.
He's trying to get the, get the water off the road out there. And we've done a pretty good stretch of it from, what, Logtown?
Yeah, we still have a lot of gravel and stone.
Yeah.
Wait until the end of July, the first of July.
Yeah.
The, we moved the excavator, that Thursday, up on Scrivener Hill, there's a couple of culverts that they're plugged.
Yeah.
Get those unplugged, but now the excavator's there, we might as well ditch that right down through and do that while it's there and then go back, probably Cranberry Meadow.
You're doing all the ditching, or one of the boys?
No, I do.
Just you and Dichen?
We got a couple of culverts. There's one right by the temple, that overbought culvert.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And that one, that should be changed.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's a culvert or what. And then, there's one right by the Willow Road. You know, where that is by Larry Ford and, and there's one there, go like this.
It's already ready to dig here anyway.
I don't think it's plugged.
Is that the one where you were blowing it out and the pieces of the rusted height came out the other end?
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So, we've got to get back around and there's three or four around Greenwood that need to be changed.
Yeah.
Couple of Pauls and there's one grader, basically in the middle of the corner, there was a hole there.
Is it a sinkhole?
That never got fixed. I'm not even sure if that's a culvert or culvert or whatever.
Danny Paul said there was a lot of water coming off the side of that mountain.
That I see.
Places that had never.
All the way down there.
Yeah, that whole bridge line, all the way down. A lot of water came off that post. April, when we had the rain and the melt, and then at May 20th.
Wedge is constantly coming up ours, all that stuff went up in the road down through there, you know, trees in the winter, bring that part. So, that's almost a year of the thing ditching that down. It's narrow anyway.
Yeah.
Dynamite.
Right, yeah.
We had talked at one point with Shawna and stuff about putting the French drain system, like that, down through there, but I don't even think that would work very good.
Where it's tight to the Greenwood Lake?
We're just better off to ditch it.
Yeah. And there's a spring in one spot there, isn't there?
Yeah, a couple of them I think.
Yeah, so there's always water.
Yeah.
Even when it's dry.
And it's hard to get any ditching at all anyways, because it's wet, but it's narrow as it is. People travel over in the ditch, but you can make it a ditch.
It's not any wider than it needs to be.
Right.
It's not a, not a problem, it's gonna go away, it's only gonna be, we've just got to get to it.
Yeah, there's ledge on one side and a lake on the other.
But that's handy, I've been there for the next couple of weeks while Greg's gone.
And then you're gonna take the last week?
I'm undecided, but I think so.
Yeah, trying to get him to do that, so, it's got a week coming to him, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else you can think of, or?
Maybe you can get in touch with the camp people there, we could do that Wednesday.
This, this week, or, okay.
I mean, they're buying the gravel, right?
Right.
So, it's not gonna hurt our budget.
Okay, so this is Herrick's Code.
And it's supposed to be nice Wednesday, I think, so.
Oh, good.
Okay.
You have to get that job done down the way.
Yeah, I'll maybe try calling her this evening.
Have to run out a couple loads, you know, figure out where they want them, and then we'll do the road.
Okay, and if they can't get, I think what they were gonna try to do is have either some camp owners or whoever they've hired to do the section of road that the town can do, if they can't get them by Wednesday, would it be another, do you have another day, or just wait, play it by year?
Yeah, I guess after that, I don't know.
Okay.
Wednesday would be a good day for us, because we're waiting for the goal.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Tell them to make it work.
Yeah, make it work. You're gonna get dirt down there, find somebody to move it. I'm sure if they can, they'll jump right out of it, because they.
Right, it may not be to the weekend or something, so, find a place that, where it wouldn't be blocking the road, obviously.
Okay, I'll try to call her tonight. I have an email address, but I think they have a phone number too, so.
We're gonna have to back to it, so it can't be too extravagant either.
Right. Now, I think they were thinking, there'd be the, there's another turnaround just after the one that they're, that we're planning on using for the grader, and then their road significantly narrows.
Right.
And I think they were hoping that the loads that they would use on the narrow part could get dumped right, right where that road really changes.
If it works, we're gonna look at it.
Okay, okay. I could have her maybe meet me there and just, you could talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to get a hold of her today, tomorrow.
Yeah. That would be a good project, I wonder if they.
Okay. Anything else you can?
Lots of ditching. And like I said, I'm gonna try to put Peter on the grader, I'll obviously be with him a little bit.
That would be a good practice for us.
And it's these days that have days of rain and stuff, you could days through that and just teach him a little more.
Yeah. Any other questions that?
No, that's my take of that.
Okay, so, let's look, just briefly here, I have the Municipal Roads General Permit, Grants and Aid Program information for another grant work for this summer, fiscal year 20. The town has been allotted $12,700 with a 20% match of $3,175. That's basically three segments of hydrologically connected road. Greg and I have been talking about Valley Lake Road, the blower section, I think it was two summers ago that we'd worked on the upper part through the grant aid program.
On the opposite side of the road, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, this would be, you know, where that, where that really sharp bend is, and then you drop right down to Kirk Gollant's place?
Yeah.
It would be that section of road, which has taken a pretty good hit this, this spring.
So, what would you be doing to it?
Well, that's what, that's what we would find out from Dan Courier, but I would've mentioned, I don't know.
You know where the grass hasn't grown?
Yeah.
I'd like to stone that, all the way, just like East Hill, right around the corner.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, we'll see what they come up with.
So, there's a turnout at the bottom of that stretch, so, we imagine that the water would, and there's a culvert too.
Right, me and Eric put that culvert.
Yeah, culvert.
And that's open now to?
Yeah, yeah, about three quarters of the way down, so. What happened this spring is that the first round of flooding, you know, that side of the hill where it's pretty much steep bank or all the way down, the snowbank was out, so the water that was running down the road couldn't get into the ditch.
Yeah.
So, we ran down the road, gullied it out pretty good. And then, the May 20th, I think that's when most of the road gravel went on to Kirk Gollant's lawn, and then there's some more with May 20th. So, we've got his lawn all cleaned up, and Greg has opened up that turnout, so there's, you know, so it should be running down the ditch, but it was basically, a big part of that would be just redoing that ditch. And I don't know what else Dan will suggest.
Come up with, yeah.
Because you really can't have it run off the other side, because the brook is right there.
Yeah.
And that's, of course, that's what they are trying to have not happen, is.
Not about places for it to go.
Right.
Bottom of that hill, either on Kirk's or in the brook.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's it, so. So, I'm sure there would be a series of stone dams and stone line culverts, which would catch, the dams kind of catch some of the road gravel, of course, then.
Then they gotta get them out.
Then you gotta clean them out, yeah, so.
That's kind of the pain of a lot of the stuff they're doing nowadays, is they'd all require maintenance.
That's all been done, that's all stolen, it's been out of there.
Well, yeah, you're right, the stone ditches do require maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, like on Valley Lake Road coming into the village, which you guys did last summer, there are stone dams there, but if you look, the road gravel, you know, each stone dam has pretty much caught the gravel, but.
Winter sand.
Yeah, winter sand, so now you've gotta get that out of there.
That's what they're designed to do.
Yeah.
They weren't good.
So, you're supposed to go back, dig them out, and then restone them again, and type of thing?
Very, I guess you could just shovel out the gravel.
They've been around, they really don't have an answer, because they've been around and around about town running screens, so you could screen that stuff back out and use the stone again, and they really haven't come up with an answer.
And all these.
I guess some of the towns are like running them back through their sand screen, which, you know, ours is three years, so, that's what comes that stone.
You gotta haul it back to the shop.
Yeah.
Right, you're getting, exactly.
Yeah, you're handling it a lot, a lot of maintenance.
Cheaper to go by no.
Yeah, cheaper to put the old stone down, yeah.
Because it's kind of a, I mean, it's state mandated, but it's kind of a pain in the neck.
Yeah, it makes it harder to use.
They do work, they know where they're supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so this is kind of what we have in the, in the works for that. I think that that stretch of road will pretty much use up this grant, but it'll allow us to repair a section of road that needs some work and get, get some money back for it.
Will they pay eighty, eighty percent or twenty percent?
Yeah, eighty, it's an eighty, twenty percent match, so. And up, up to, you know, we, they wouldn't give us any more than we can make a good argument for it than what they, pretty much, the base offer that they have. So, we'll be careful. You know, sometimes we do go over, but we get the road fixed.
Twelve seven, that's what it's.
Twelve seven, yeah. The first year we did it, we, you know, you, the catch is that they'll, they'll only, the grant is for hydrologically connected segments of roads, so like when we did the upper part of Valley Lake, there were two segments that were hydrologically connected, but then there were, was the rest of the road above it, so the water's gonna run down to those two segments, so, you know, we did the whole road and then got reimbursed for the two segments that were connected, but, you know, you really have to do the whole road in order for it to.
Yeah, be effective, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's kind of what we watch out for, we're trying to make sure that it's gonna cover most of the project. So, does this seem like a good thing to do this year?
Sure.
Okay, so, we could, let's see. So, the other, other part of this grant, which have, which we don't qualify for, is they also have a program for equipment purchases.
See that, yeah.
And on the last sheet on page seven, it says that we aren't eligible for equipment, so, I don't know whether they do that on a cycle of different years, or what the story is there, but.
So, subject to available state of the law funding.
Yeah, so, but we, you know, the equipment that they list, we don't really need anyway, we already have a hydro seeder, so, we should be good.
That was a nice purchase.
Yeah.
It worked out well.
Yeah.
Long as it's hungry. Haven't even used it, it's ready to go, but we haven't used it yet.
So, let's see, one through three, so we would, we would sign, page three is a letter of intent, which is letting the Regional Planning Commission, DEC, know that we're, we wanna do this, and then, yeah, that's pretty much it, just that letter of intent. So, and I don't know if we really need to make a motion or not, I guess I should, just be on the safe side, so, I'd like to make a motion that we participate in the Municipal Roads General Permit, Grants and Aid Program for fiscal year 20, to work on three hydrologically connected segments of Valley Lake Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, we would be, we would try to finish this by fall, right, October 31st, Valley Lake Road, yeah. So, this is six.
Long project, you figure that is, so we ain't there.
I would guess, yeah. Like I said, it depends on if they come up with it, you've got to hand place that stone in there, obviously, that's a little longer.
So, we'll, this is due by July 3rd, but we'll send it in, and we'll make a date with Dan Courier and Shawna, if she can come, to let us know what we need to do. Another sort of candidate date we have with Shawna and maybe Jaren Borg, the hydrological fellow from ANR who does a lot of state highway stuff, is to come and take a look at some of the old metal culverts, like the one on Bailey Bridge Road, and maybe the ones in the village, that they're starting to show quite a bit of sign of rusting. So, Jaren did look at the one on Bailey Bridge Road last fall and said it was okay for now.
That's good, yeah.
But, you know.
Remember when Harry was here, they had looked at it with him, and they were talking about putting a bridge in there, not a culvert.
I'm sure it'd be a box culvert, yeah.
Yeah, that one would.
Yeah, I think any, any of those bigger ones that they would.
Same with up the Gernises, too, they should look at that one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they, they like those box culvert.
Yeah, that does seem to be the new.
They're expensive.
So, we, we had an original date to look at some of those, but it was very high water, things were, things were melting, so we decided we would wait. So, yeah, so we'll have Dan come, he'll tell us what, you know, needs to be done on that road, the Valley Lake Road, and then, at some point, this summer, early fall.
Hopefully Shawna gets back to us on the Cabot Road, so we can get that done.
Yeah, that, yeah, let me read, let's see.
That would be something that'll have to be placed over there.
Yeah, we're pretty lucky right now, that hasn't cracked, and it's helped really well.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering about.
Okay.
Was the Cabot Road.
Cabot Road. So, I had sent an email to Shawna, just wondering if she had heard back from the people that came and looked at the washout, and she, we had a phone conversation before they, before they had come, and she mentioned that V-Trans has a town highway emergency grant, and it kicks in if there's, you know, there's a threshold, I think it's like $20,000 or more of damage.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm kind of curious to know what the people who came and looked, what they estimate the repair for that to be. If it's more than $20,000, then the town is eligible for this town highway emergency grant, and it's a, the V-Trans would pay 90% of the repair, and the town would have to come up with a 10% match.
I know there was a minimum, too, right, had to be over 20 or over 35 or whatever.
Yeah, it has to, has to be over $20,000, yeah. So, in her emails, she mentioned that in order to start the grant process, I need a letter from the town on Town Letterhead stating why it is necessary for the town to receive such grant, and then in parentheses, basically that the damages will recreate a financial hazard to the town. So, we'll get some testimony from our town treasurer about that.
You have to access, it's just, once it goes.
Right.
Then you're looking at the other road.
And then she, and then she mentioned it would also be helpful if there were a brief description of damages, specifically Cabot Road, but any other features of other roads in town that may drive repair urgency. And, you know, we've basically already dealt with those, but there were, you know, stuff on County Road that we could also mention, which would help raise that threshold level if.
We needed to, yeah.
We needed to, yeah. Or, it might help, you know, we'd meet the threshold level with the Cabot Road, but there were these other repair costs that may help us cover something, you know, the repair that we spent. So, I'll, I'll write a letter from the Town Letterhead, just, maybe I'll send it to you and Paul and Greg before actually send it to Shawna, so just make sure that everybody's in agreement about what I say. I'll mention, maybe the County Road, those two culverts, we do have some photos of those, so we could use that as a backup.
And everything's written down, too, so we can come up with figures, too.
Yeah, so, and I'll, I'll get that, try to do that, I have a, a good amount of free time this week, so I'll try to do that this week, and then, so maybe by Thursday, I'll send it to you and Paul and Greg, and I'll let Shawna know that we put this up together. I think that's all that I can think of for town highway stuff.
If we do the Cabot Road, then we should do Dan Gernis's culvert as well, same time?
Well, there was no damage there.
No, so we couldn't include that in it?
I don't think, because this is more to, I'll ask Shawna that question, but.
That's, got pretty high several times.
Yeah, well, that, that day, May 20th, it got right up to the top.
Yeah, and that one, if that went out, then we'd really have some problems, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Do you, if you, I think you were working at that point in time, there was a plan that was made, you know, there's the big metal culvert, and then there was a plan, I think it was after Irene, to have a, like a higher overflow culvert, right beside, actually, I think in the plan, there were two.
I was thinking that there was two, on either side of halfway or something.
We, I actually looked at the end, and Jason Borg and all the stuff, and they figured one on this side toward the blacktop.
Okay.
Just one, there'd be a dub.
Right, because the other, the other ones, if you look at it, there's no place for it to go.
High out on the downhill side, yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask Shawna that.
They, they did look at it.
Yeah.
But it wasn't an Irene thing, it was, you know, after I started.
Maybe it was the last, well, the last time that the village flooded through the store, that wasn't Irene, that was after.
That was after, yeah.
Yeah, and it was kind of the same situation where we had a lot of rain, and then we got a big dump really quickly, yeah.
But it was discussed.
Yeah, 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 and we can't find any, I know, I remember seeing a, a rough drawing kind of design, but haven't been able to find that anywhere down in the garage.
Harry's stuff's all gone now, I never saw it.
So, but, so maybe it would be just having Jaren come and look at it again.
At that time, it was, who was the guy before you?
Yeah, he did the Nelson Pond Road, right, Pat, was it?
Patrick.
Patrick, somebody wrote, Richards, Patrick?
No.
I have that name somewhere, but.
Yeah, anyways, he's the one that looked at that.
Right, yeah.
Or does he still?
And about the same time.
He retired, and Jaren took his place, yeah.
About the same time we put that bridge in, in the goal.
Yeah, yeah. So, good, so I'll, we'll get on that, and get that letter written and out. And then the other thing, this is kind of, not really related to the road, but I know Chris had a question about the rock that washed down behind his place, so I, I called Jaren Borg, I left a message. He called back, I wasn't home, but my wife took the message, and he said that if there's less than 10 cubic yards of area, I assume that's area, an amount of rock that's in the brook, then we could go ahead and move that rock on our own.
Okay.
I took a look at it, and it looks like the rock that washed down is, is part of the rock that goes around the box culvert. It's all, you know, like about foot, 16 inches.
It was probably on the other side of the road.
Yeah, it was on the other side, and I think it just washed down.
Yeah, it did fill it up a lot, though, it's, yeah, a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah, and you know, we could just move it to the side, have it like a, we don't want to channel it too much, but if we, you know, we could kind of just.
Reinforce the bank.
Reinforce the bank and kind of take away the stuff that's in the stream that's kind of flowing on down.
Because it's all laying there underneath it anyways.
Yeah.
Anything that's there is.
Yeah, and I don't know whether we could do that by hand, or, some of those rocks, they didn't look like they were horribly big, but I didn't get right in there and pick it out.
Now, long as he knows he can move him out of the way.
Right, yeah.
Because then he may have a party someday and.
Okay, he's welcome to do that.
And vice and vice.
If he does, have him, have him call me, I'm not, I'm not he-man, but I could pick up the smaller ones.
Just stack them on the side, then.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I was gonna just let him know that if he wants to try to do something there, he's welcome to it. And, you know, 10 cubic yards, I don't really have a sense of what that is, but I think just moving the rock would be fine.
Clean it out.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not like we're changing the channel or scooping it around or whatever. Okay, so, I think we're done with the town highway report, if you'd like to go home.
Give anything else, I guess? I did finally buy an iPad.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Got a good night going, that's gonna be, he'll be banner.
How big a one did you get?
The big one. Beast. Basically, this gets the keyboard and the tablet to protect it.
Yeah, we've been researching that for, talking about it for all of the years.
That's what all the other passing the fog.
Takes pictures, the whole works.
Yeah, so everything, any work now from here on in, any damage, photo documented.
Once we get going, I mean, you can just talk to it and it prints the text right on.
And Jay?
It's gonna be a big one.
Dan Courier had some recommended apps to get for it, that, for any of the road work, you know, ones that could read the slope and stuff like that, so. It could also, I think there might be one for just looking at the crown and the grave and stuff, there's a lot of different.
Everything, they estimate how many areas of gravel you're gonna need and oil and stuff.
Pretty good.
Yeah, well, a lot of the town highway road crews are, have them now.
All gotta go, yeah.
On, on the road too, or can I can.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess.
And it's, you know, it's a record for this when it's voted in a permit.
Do they back it up regularly somewhere or somehow so it doesn't?
That's what we should start doing, yeah, because the photos.
We have iPhone directly, just sort of like that.
With it, with, with the pad, yeah.
Do the laptop and that.
Yeah, that would be good to back it up, sit pretty regularly.
Yeah, we've got it, we don't want to lose all the grain too.
Yeah, we'll have so much information, we'll be able to make sure we can find it when we need it to.
That's a new tool that's gonna be area up with all this space stuff.
Yeah, that's gonna be mandated.
But we'll be able to go back and say, we already did this road, you know, two years ago even, or whatever.
And that, that's the other thing that we could do, you know, we have those to grants and A, but, you know, a road crew is working on a lot of the roads, you know, ones that aren't necessarily hydrologically connected or just doing road work every year. And all of that qualifies to get us, you know, for the, now that we have the road inventory, there's a lot listed for work that needs to be done. So when we do the work that's on that list, you know, being able to photo document it.
And then go towards that.
Yeah, we can report to A and R that, you know, that we did this work. I think at some point, they haven't got it set up yet, but there'll be like a whole, a kind of a website where each town can log onto it and then, you know, report work that they've done, anything that's on the inventory when work gets done. We can report that and spend on it and then it gets checked off the list, so it'll be more office work for somebody to do.
You're gonna make a little jar.
I, I think they're, they're supposed to have, they should have had it up and running already, but I think that sometime this summer, I think Dan has been saying it should be ready to be used for.
Cut the, I forgot to mention too, we get those signs for this, they're up, I don't know if you noticed.
Ah, well, they're already up, yeah.
Children.
Folks out in Maple Lane, George and Aaron Sawyer asked for.
Alright, okay.
I guess they're anticipating their child getting ready to run around.
Getting ready to play in the road. Yeah, you got a bunch of, yeah, there's quite a few kids in the village now. There's a couple of kids that ride wheelies up and down the road all day long on their bicycles.
I have no idea who that is.
Oh, it's not Cody. He does it Woodbury, there's two or three kids down here doing it down the road. They should get together.
Yeah, the other village.
The other village, yeah.
Anyways, we slept those up today too.
Good, thank you for that all.
That's done.
Yeah, I was gonna say I'd let them know, but they probably already seen them, so.
I'm sure, yeah.
Good, okay. So you're, you're welcome to take that with you.
Yep, yeah.
Keep it at the garage.
I'll get ahold of Dan and see if he can come out here.
Actually, I'll get on there and, we're gonna do Valley Lake, we'll just stick it up here.
Okay. I looked at the A and R map this afternoon, there are three segments there, so.
Yep.
Let's see.
Alrighty, hey, thank you for being on that here.
Thanks for coming.
Yep.
So maybe next, um, let's, let's go over this census thing.
See you later.
Here's the information on it.
My ladies.
Laura's thought is that she would be willing to do the work, it would kind of go towards her town clerk assistant time.
Oh, good, yeah.
And kind of check in with the listers, she's gonna try to find out whether they just want it for the last year or for, since the last census was taken. And my thought, I think the reason they're asking for this information is just to know where, and maybe the nine one one system would also work with that, Skip might have some information about that.
New constructions, this is all about new housing in town, right?
Yeah, which they might not have listed on their, you know, census data for places to, doors to go knock on. I think that's the reason why they're asking for, is that they would have, you know, more up to date information on other addresses in town.
I guess we'll participate, so there's, there's funding available if your, if your town is growing, so. Yeah, right?
So does it look like that they'll pay for the work that Laura does, or they could get a little money back, or is it just, I don't think it'll be hours and hours of time, but.
I don't see that it says about getting any money from them, does it anywhere?
I think it's just to help them, so.
Just to help them, alright.
They plan to do another one twenty twenty, I think it's every ten years, so they're trying to get.
Yeah, it's the, it's the new census that's coming up next year.
Leslie worked for them.
Yeah.
And it seems like a.
Yeah, sounds good, yeah, yeah, we're local, so we know what's going on in town, so I guess that makes sense.
So I will leave this information with you, Laura, to.
You do have to fill out, there's a part of it you have to fill out and it has four days before it has to be sent in.
Ah, well, I guess we better do it. So this, the registration form, is that what we need to fill out?
Yeah, there's a part that says yes, we want to participate, and then it has the official, that would be the contact, and then you have to designate a lead. So if they need to talk to somebody, you can sign me up for that.
Signature of official, so I could sign that as the chair.
Yeah, and you're the official, yeah.
So I could do this outside of the.
And I'll fax it to you, as long as I have it back before Thursday.
Okay, well, I'll do it before I leave tonight. Okay, so, set that aside. So it looks like we're ready for the town treasurer report. Randy, we're all set for town treasurer. I think we're doing pretty good on time, that's good.
Yeah.
Steel poles, huh?
Yeah.
So I took out the zero balance while I was creating, well, for the balance sheet. So it shortened it to one page and on the reverse side, I'm doing the do to, do from.
Okay.
So seeing the balances left, like the highway is at sixty-one thousand, and then the rest of the other funds. Talking about other funds, so I set up the Woodbury School Building Fund, so it's number fifteen. So one of the checks from OSSU in Woodbury School District was cut and I deposited it for the forty-six, forty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents. So we will be having one more check for the remainder, cut out of that, and I'll be closing, closing that checking account. Other income, in the last two weeks, we received a cleanup grant reimbursement in the same fiscal year. Which never happened.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Land records recording, land record copies, map recording, prepaid taxes, and zoning permit. Delightments C's, Ron gave me in the last two weeks, six thousand, two hundred, forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
That's great.
And then today I transferred sixteen thousand to cover expenses for AP.
Good.
So how are you feeling, I know you, there was an email expressing concern about just our, the money in the piggy banks for July first, how, how are you feeling about that now?
So I discussed and I bounced that email to all of you.
Yeah.
My biggest thing was the MOU signed for the fire department. All of those payments are due on the first.
Right.
And there's no way. I stated my expenses and Paul said, we'll figure something out.
Okay, and that's kind of where it is now?
Yeah. Yeah, until my tax money starts rolling in, I mean, there's three huge whacks with the fire department right off the bat. And, yeah, there's a thirty thousand, there's the eighteen thousand for the quarter, and then there's a seventeen for the truck. And I have, I have my highway equipment.
Those are two big ones, yeah.
But the fire department all comes out of the general fund, and the general fund does, is, will not have that, that much in it at that time.
I think, you know, we really need to work into the future with, like we did with the LoPro, like an October first.
Yep.
I don't know how, if the fire department can kind of reconfigure things, but in general, yeah, in general for any of those things.
If the MOU can be rewritten, because yeah, there's no way that.
Yeah, makes sense, because we don't start getting tax money in until.
Right, July, I mean, I think everybody's kind of set on, well, this is the beginning of the new fiscal year, so July one, there's the bill, yeah. But it just doesn't work as far as our, you know, town cash flow. I mean, we can borrow money, but if we don't have to, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Because then we're paying the bank for.
Exactly.
And, you know, some too, so.
Yeah, so we should probably go over that to the next meeting with Paul and maybe Chance or whatever.
I think they're trying to figure it out, I'm not sure what they.
Yeah, Chance is looking at the payments he has, when his due dates are.
Yeah.
The MOU does state in its signs that all the money will be for July one.
Yeah. Well, if they, I mean, if they can't, if we have to take out a loan, we'll have to take out a loan, but let's see what they can, what they can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that when we, when we signed that.
Any questions for me?
Let's see what we want to think of. No, anything else?
So this is my double checking everything month, so making sure I have all my twelve electric bills on my twelfth going through. So I'll be going through and making sure the correct accounts were hit.
Okay, are you gonna be able to get some backup, because you were mentioning having, blanking out on your assistant's name.
Oh, Tom.
Tom, yeah.
Yep, I talked to them, he's gonna be coming in once a month now, he's gonna be doing the nine forty-one quarterlies. And he's gonna be doing the Department of Labor and, I'm drawing a blank, the state. So yeah, there's the four big ones which double check my monthly.
Right.
Accounts, and the Beamer, so we do in the Beamer also.
So that should come in house and do it right here, yeah, which would be nice.
Which, you know, for the LCT and making sure the controls. And with Nemrec, it's very simple.
So does Tom have to learn a bit about, about Nemrec to do that, or?
There's a couple of things, yeah.
Couple of things, okay.
But I want, somebody else needs to know besides me.
I'm sure he'll, he'll be a quick study on that.
And for me, it's just another double checking over me.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's, he still has, he's only halfway with his expense by online for him as we speak, so.
And then I noticed in the bills, this is something I just thought of, that Bill Hall, there was a final bill for the audit assistance. So are you pretty well set for knowing what you need to do to, in order to be prepared for?
No, that wasn't from him.
Oh, okay.
That was for the payroll audit.
Oh, okay.
And that was the increased, the more road crew hours.
Okay.
So that was just the kickover from our payroll audit.
Okay.
And so that just comes out of the town, the highway expense for that.
Okay.
But his, it didn't show anything for him, I haven't received anything for him, yeah.
Okay, alright.
He kind of talks fast and.
Yeah, he does.
Kind of overwhelming.
So was it your understanding that he was gonna come back and?
No, he hasn't even sent me the emails he said he was gonna send, so.
Do you want me to bug him, or sometimes that helps?
I mean, it's, it's.
Because you would like to have practices set by.
My thing is we're gonna have to set up, we're gonna have to set up more accounts.
Right.
And there's gonna be a count for each location that the town owns. And showing the, of course, there's no depreciation of the land.
Right.
But there'll be an Excel spreadsheet I'll have to, to create on top of more paperwork of it just consistently showing up.
So it'd be like the town office, the school, the town hall, yeah, town forest, I guess, that's property, town wetland.
The park, then.
Yeah. Some more, more work.
Right. But, and then it'll show up on our financial statements.
So, and was that pretty much all that he felt that the town needed to do in order to be prepared for a professional audit, or?
Yes, because Beamer's takes care of the retirement, their percentage, so if I need, ever needed to, and what, what other towns do is they just get ahold of Beamer's and get a printout for each employee and then they give that to the auditors. Instead of me keeping track of their rates.
Right.
I pay them what I owe them and then I don't keep track of what they owe the employee.
Okay.
So getting, getting, itemizing the pieces.
Seems like once that was set up, it would be okay, yeah.
Right, right, it'll be good to go, it's just creating.
Do you have to do that for all the town highway equipment too, with depreciation and all that?
It's already a current ball.
That's, that's.
Hopefully not.
That would be another Excel spreadsheet, and that's kind of on the lines what Laura is doing as far as the maintenance schedule. Everything that's done, I mean, that's just. So yeah, there'll be a percentage each year, so it'd be another Excel spreadsheet. So I did sign up for another, I'll make us coming this month, I believe. I think that'll be another Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
The percentages, and then, of course, we don't pay tax, but, but as far as providing it
Right.
to the final audit, so.
Yeah, okay. Done.
And then it's just closing up the fiscal year and resetting up the binder.
Yeah, yeah, a couple more weeks, three weeks, I guess.
So, the new Valley Lake, was that in the budget?
That's for fiscal year twenty, and I think I would have to look and see if it was in the budget, but I think it was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we did budget for it, it was pretty much the same amount as this year, so. And the report is all done for this fiscal year, Laura's gonna scan it for me so I can send it in. I had it pretty much done. I had it pretty much done before all the school stuff hit the fan, and then it just sat on my desk, so, um.
And hopefully I'll have the, um, what's it, sixty-one hundred or in that ballpark of the, the grant, the reimbursement, um, that Skip was working with.
Right, for the hazard mitigation.
Hopefully that one will come in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
If not, I'll do it as receivable.
Yeah, and I think that this grants an aid for this fiscal year, um, I would be surprised if it came in by the end of this fiscal year. But, um, so that'll be receivable too, I guess.
Until the next fiscal year.
But I'll ask, um, when I send in the report, um, I'll ask when they think we might be able to get, because it's money that they have put aside. It's kind of sitting there ready to be paid out, so hopefully we won't have to wait as long as we did the first year, so.
That would help.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be twelve thousand dollars that will come in.
Right. Okay, yeah, it's just something in the back of my mind, and I had to make the journal entries, but I'm, I'm still waiting on money.
Yeah.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Diana, oh, is she on her way? There she is, there she is.
Hello.
Hello.
I'll, uh, report on the public records request that, yeah, last Wednesday night. On Thursday, I asked, um, to email to the Secretary of State's office whether it's possible, um, or usual to charge for time. I didn't get back from them until Monday, and they said that you could charge for time. Meanwhile, on Friday, I came in because of the time crunch, I came in, it's been two hours on Friday. And then on Monday, I worked with Brandy a lot, digging out things here and there, making sure we had everything, you know, the same numbers on each, on each side. So that was somewhat useful, so I only added another, like, hour and a half for that day. And, uh, this is what I sent him, I called him Monday night to see if he wanted to come in and pick it up, I didn't hear from him. So I called him Tuesday to see if he wanted to come in and pick it up. And, um, I told him that the totals that was being charged, because Monday, yeah, like I said, Monday I heard that I could charge for time. It was ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, but he handed me the twenty dollars and said that that was all he had to pay, because I hadn't called him. You know, I mean, I was al- almost done with the work by the time I found out that I could charge the time, so.
Now, how do you charge your time, as personal, or does, to the town?
Oh, no, I just put, put in my regular hourly rate.
So, so you got paid from Mike to do it and the town, or how does?
I didn't get anything, I just get my regular hourly rate.
You get your regular, so you did it on town time.
Right, right, yeah, oh, definitely, yeah, but he said if it's not, if the. I hereby agree to pay reasonable and customary costs for these copies upon delivery provided that the total does not include, exceed twenty dollars. If the charge would exceed that amount, please so inform me before incurring the expense. Well, you know, I had already incurred the expense because there's a time limit on responding to these things, and, and, uh, he didn't feel that he had to pay the ninety-three dollars, so.
Well, that's not unusual, is it?
Especially since the town's been so generous with him. So.
Okay.
And that's done, he came and picked it up, and, um, let's see, on the second page, I gave him the.
Your contact.
Contact information from the Regional Planning Commission and the, uh, Agency of Natural Resources. Hopefully they, they know enough to charge for time without having to ask the Secretary of State.
It's public information, if, well, I guess it's public information here too, so.
Well, the law says that if, yeah, that if you, you can charge if it takes more than thirty minutes.
Okay.
So, I did have to dig through each file, each and every file, and make sure we had all the, um, you know, advertising bills and everything in order. So.
Thank you for doing that work.
That's nice to have this anyways, I guess, they know where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, I have, still haven't gotten back to Brandy to match up our numbers, but I've had this total here on this first page, it was sixteen, three seventy-four. I didn't add in the twelve hun- the twenty-one hundred from the Woodbury Fund, Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, because that's not out of our thirty thousand dollars. And I don't know if the BRLA application, that might, you know, I had Brandy take that out of that fund at the time, but I don't think Beamer's gonna allow that, because that's really a state.
Right, that is a separate thing.
And there's also, the, the attorney has not billed us yet for the title search, so surely we also will money there.
Of course.
Yeah. So there's that. Other, oh, we haven't gotten that sort of page yet, so I'll just say that the legislature passed, uh, a law increasing the recording fees. This certain number of town clerks have been lobbying for, for years, and, you know, I didn't really say anything, I didn't really think it was necessary. I mean, the attorneys and the banks, they don't care.
Right.
You know, it all goes back to the client anyways. People who are refinancing all the time are gonna get hit more than others, but, um, we also have to go back to, uh, four dollars a page, putting four dollars a page into our restoration fund.
Okay.
And there is an out clause on that, I think every year, I'm gonna have to send a report, including the summary of the monies allocated from each town's Restoration and Preservation Reserve Fund. And there, uh, a municipality may allocate less than the four dollars per page if the clerk of the municipality annually certifies the municipality has sufficient dedicated reserve funds to provide for the uses described in the statute. One of which is digitization, but I hope digitization is not gonna happen until I'm old enough. Yeah, people can come in and look at the paper, what's the big deal? They just wanna sit in their offices and look at everything online, that's so fun.
That would be a major project, isn't it?
Yeah, I guess so, I mean, a lot of towns have done it, they're happy with it, but.
How do they do, do they hire someone to come in and do it for them, or?
I think they do, there are a couple of companies that will come in, once you sign up with them, the companies that'll, they'll come in and scan all your old records, all your old books. Although, I don't know, now that everything is, everything is on microfilm, I don't know whether they could take the microfilm. That would be a lot easier than take, going page to page by it, through every book. But anyways, then, and then they set up a system whereby when something new comes in, you just feed it and, and it gets, you know. But then you also have to have a public computer for people to come in and do their research, and we don't really have room for that.
No.
So anyways, someday.
Have it in the basement.
Right.
Yep, and I'm down there.
Yeah. Okay, so that'll happen the first of July, we've also got a bunch of new laws, I guess I told you about this last time. New things having to do with public records, or public, vital records, rather, birth certificates, death certificates. Laura and I sat through a webinar, and we'll figure it out when the time comes. So, this, um, not really, okay, not to the store update yet, so I wanted to ask.
Funny fits, yeah.
I've had some emails back and forth between the school board members and the superintendent's office, asking why they're not letting people know what they're supposed to be voting on.
Right.
Because to me, it's, I know, a lot of, some people mentioned they didn't know anything about that budget vote that was going on. Some people showed up, Paul was one of them, who showed up and said that he didn't know what it was all about. You know, he, they never notified people about this seven million dollar budget, which I thought was kind of, I don't know, it just makes me think our fears about all totally losing control are real.
Right.
And one of the brief, one of the responses I got to my proposal about why aren't they doing this, well, it's gonna cost too much. That shouldn't be part of the equation at all. So I said, well, it's gonna cost too much for the school board to, to do, um, what if we hit it at the town level? I mean, this is, this whole, this is a crazy thing, here's one ballot.
Yeah, this is what people are gonna be confronting with.
Yeah, here's the other ballot, four pages.
Yeah.
And people aren't gonna, you know, I mean, there are some people who care enough to read this earlier and try to figure it out. If they just show up to vote.
People are not gonna know.
They're not gonna be able to do anything, I mean, yeah, there were like twenty of us who went to a bunch of meetings.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, and then the, the board offered, said they're gonna send home a copy of the warning with all the schoolchildren. That's like ten percent of our population, our households, plus it's a very select sample.
Right.
Um, so anyways, I, uh, if we.
What, what if we were to do like an informational meeting?
It's too late for that, they could have done that already.
No, the town itself.
The town itself, well.
So an informal one, I mean, it's.
Yeah, but then who would talk, who would?
The school board, um, Stephen Murphy, who worked on these articles, would be a very good person to.
But how many people would come to the meeting?
Well, that's it, but, but at least.
And then you can't advertise the meeting except on Front Porch Forum, and not everybody has email, or checks their email every day. You know, and then putting it in the Hardwood Gazette, you know, there was like a half page of all this stuff was in the Hardwood Gazette, but who reads that? So, so my request to you is, I think I'm gonna go to the school board meeting tomorrow night and ask them again why they don't think that's necessary to let people know what they're gonna be voting on, and if they say no, I'd like to know whether we could do that here. I mean, I figured, we got three hundred and eighty households on our, on our mailing list, so that's about two hundred dollars worth of postage.
So what, what are you thinking of doing, sending out?
I'm gonna mail it out.
Yeah, the Articles of Agreement?
Yeah, well, this warning, which basically has what's on there, it's six pages, so three pages double sided, could go for fifty-five cents. It would take some time, but the cost of the postage and the cost of the paper would be for, you know, less than three hundred dollars.
Okay, I wonder if the school board would be willing, if they aren't willing to do that, then probably it might be better that you did it just so it got done. But, um, I wonder if they would be willing to have their, like, you know, at the end, any questions, contact so-and-so school board members, if people are kind of wondering, if they care enough to have questions, um, if they would be willing to at least be, to be open to being contacted by someone.
One thing, yeah, one thing that Joanne said, one of her emails, is that I could be telling people about this, but I, you know, it's not right for me to be lobbying and say, oh, this one's good, this one's bad, or this one means this, and this one means something else, you know, that's just not my job at all, so.
Be interesting to see if you did get this out to people in town, how many increased the voters.
Yeah, we never know, we would never know.
Or you wouldn't, because this is called.
Because they're, they're gonna come, you know, I suppose some of them, who could ask them when they come in to vote, did you?
Right.
How'd you hear about this? An exit poll, an exit poll.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyways, if the schools, um, and I don't think they will, because if they did it for us, they'd have to do it for Hardwood, and that would probably be like a thousand dollars instead of three thousand, three hundred dollars. Yeah, this is something Laura and I could work on later this week if you agreed to.
Do you think, Mike?
I have no objection to it, I mean, I think trying to be as helpful as.
As it can be.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be confusing anyways, but, you know, there are people who care about this stuff and think about it, and.
Few.
And this might make them think more about it, as though, okay, maybe we had forty votes the last time?
Yeah.
Forty-four, yeah.
On the seven million dollar budget.
Be interesting to see if you did this and we got eighty, or did we get twenty?
Yeah, that would be interesting, because people still might look at it and throw up their hands, but it seems only right that they have an opportunity.
Yeah, they should know, yeah, if this, if that would help in the future too.
Right, right, yeah, because it, I mean, they voted, one of those meetings where we went to in Hardwood, every, the majority of people wanted everything by Australian ballot. So if you have an Australian ballot, that means there's no opportunity to talk about things, so you need to be able to read things beforehand, in my opinion. A lot of people still won't pay attention, out of three hundred and eighty people on the, or households on the mailing list, you know, maybe hundreds of them won't really read it.
Yeah.
And they'll say, oh my God, the legislature obviously wanted the electorate to vote on this stuff, so.
Right.
Things like this.
And, you know, if you feel like teasing the school board a little bit, you could ask them if they would be willing to have contact information, some of them anyway. Because some people might have questions, you know, because, you know, somebody.
Yeah, I haven't heard from you lately, but.
I mean, you could get that and read it, and then still not really know what it's right all about, and, 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 probably not very many people would call, but somebody might be if there was an opportunity.
Yeah, but if I go to the meeting, I'm gonna have to mention that. And Joanne did say that there's not, no law against the town doing it, so it's nothing.
Yeah. Whether you go to the meeting or not, you could let somebody from the school board know that, that the town is planning on doing this, and, um, and then see if somebody is willing to take phone calls. So the ballots are gonna be this big, I guess they have to be so you can read them.
Yeah.
Really, they are, this is, this is.
Yeah, they got a hundred copies of each.
Wow.
There's certain standards that.
Yeah, this is the last time on the budget vote, we had, no, the budget vote was eight and a half by eleven, but this vote, before it was pulled, also had two very large ballots, they all went into recycling.
Yeah, I don't even need to bring my reading glasses.
These are ones that I'll post.
Well, that, that reminds me, is it possible to, to post the agenda in the little Glaston things at the, um, down by the parking area by the post office? Because now, since summer, the, the area where we usually post is pretty full of stuff. If it would be possible to do that.
Yeah, the thing is, I only have one key.
Right, yeah, so I could just, could I get the key, I could either get you the agenda, or I could borrow the key.
Also, you have the right to take anything off that bulletin board that you want to, but it would be rude.
I know, but I.
Other people put their stuff right over other.
I try to look for stuff that's outdated.
Right.
This time around, there were two eight by and a half by eleven things that were the same thing, somebody had put two of them up.
That's probably the ones that I put up about the mental health thing on Thursday night.
Might have been.
I put two because I didn't have any place else to put them, so we could talk about that too. Thursday night, uh, six o'clock, Washington Mental, Washington County Mental Health is, uh, coming to town to do a forum on people who want to discuss mental health and addiction issues, and what services are available, and maybe what services are needed. The guy who set this up is not gonna be available, but they're sending the head of the agency, Mary Moulton is her name. Lisa Flood, uh, who is from Woodbury and also works for Washington County Mental Health, will be there, and I think they have a couple other panelists. Thursday night this week.
At where?
At the town hall. So I'll be there to open it for them. We haven't, again, we haven't had much opportunity to advertise it because we don't.
I was gonna say, I can see posters.
Yeah, right.
You, and advertising it on Front Porch Forum, or?
Lisa, Lisa Flood wrote a nice thing on Front Porch Forum, and I asked her to send it to the Gazette as a letter to the editor.
Yeah.
Or as a public service announcement, and she said she would do that, but that will.
Are we using the website at all, I mean, not that hundreds of people go to it, but.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, the thing, well, all we got from them was a, was.
The poster thing?
Poster, and I don't know how those, how those can be put on there.
Or you could scan it.
Or a proper.
Scan it.
So, now, oh, I'm gonna, I think I'll send an email, a call, maybe make sure that his people know about it.
Right, right, yeah, for all that they're dealing with.
And the Sandy Reeks to make sure that their people know about it. And the Sandy Rees, to make sure that their people know about it. Rest is glad to be back.
Do you think the, is it Carol Plant, the, whatever that program is that Hardwick, that she's-
I'm not sure what she does. One of those, it's like a restorative-
Yeah, restorative, mediation thing, I guess that really wouldn't do it. Can we move on to the store?
Lauren called last week, or emailed, she says she had been in southern Vermont with somebody from the FEMA office, and he asked if they could take a look at the Woodbury storage, you know, that's like two hours away, plus, at least two hours away. So he asked if there could be, she asked, he asked her if she could go up with her smartphone, and then she asked me if I had a smartphone, and I said, well, I do have a smartphone, but I can't send anything, because it's all jammed up with stuff that I haven't done. But I do have a new tablet, so I took some nice videos, six different videos on my tablet of the water coming down from the culvert, and then going into the, under the store, and then where it comes out, and things like that. And then Laura helped me download those from my tablet to my computer, and then put them in the Dropbox, and share the Dropbox with Lauren, so that worked. Thank you, Laura. They're tech, 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 expert. Tech, tech, expert. But I didn't hear back, and I haven't heard anything else about update. Oh, but I would like to mention again, filling those holes at some point before we get started, even if you don't do it for safety reasons, when the contractor shows up, which could be any day within the next three months, he shouldn't have to deal with big holes in them.
That takes the big material, that takes the big rocks.
Well, you could take some of that one inch stuff that they filled the other hole with.
No, we could do, I just, I don't know how the Roku could get there, but, you know, Valley Lake Road, they better clean out that ditch, it's full of stone.
Yeah. Those are bigger rocks.
Those are six inch minus, five inch minus.
Right next to that ox culvert where it's-
There's that hole, plus there's another one over by the gas pumps.
And maybe, you know, they could just get a, they'd have to haul the excavator over there, kind of hang it up, fill up a truck and bring it over, but maybe there's-
If they could just dump the stone over there or something, move it around.
Yeah, I mean, not sift it or anything, just take it out of the ditch.
Yeah, drop it down there, drive a tractor and move it around.
That reminds me, I did look at the holes on the other side of the road, by the property across the roads.
Yeah.
And the thing that concerns me, and I don't know, I don't think it's changed any, but that retaining wall, right where those holes are, is really leaning.
It looks kind of sketchy. When I was behind Chris's house, standing on that retaining wall, trying to take those videos out, those are, I mean, it didn't feel unsafe or anything, but they're certainly leaning.
The cement blocks are-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of work, we don't have two there, but we get-
So, that may be something that, I don't know, if we have to do the stream restoration work, maybe the crew could. And I don't know if that, my question I had was, is that town, is it, I think it's, it could be in the state right of way, or, you know, that's probably private property.
That whole town, yeah.
So who's responsible for that retaining wall, the granite block all the way down, right, you know, right tight to the house, is that property owner, or?
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, really.
But it is, I mean, it's probably been leaning like that for many years, but-
It could be, I just never noticed it.
Yeah, I never know, I never, yeah, I never noticed it, but I was looking at the holes.
It's one of those things that, once the store is finally down and gone, you know, we'll end up having to go in and restore the walls, I would guess, at that point.
Yeah, so if we could restore-
On our, yeah, on the west, the east side.
Yeah, so on the other side of Route fourteen, maybe that could be done at the same time, if there's a crew there doing it.
Yeah, I wonder if that's, is that state, because the state must have built those-
Yeah, that's what we're just wondering.
I don't know where the right way is for the state.
I mean, the granite wall continues all the way down to where the, the Brook bends. And I know when Sean and Jaren looked at that, when they were sort of saying, oh, it's too bad that, because that's another restriction on the stream, those two retaining walls there. So, I know, I know, and part of their culvert design, when and if they ever do that, they would, they would be constrained by those two, and it's not that we're going to take them out, we really can't take them out, we'd have to remove that house, really.
Yeah, I suppose if they really wanted to be creative, they could take the whole wall out and just widen it, but that'd be quite a project in itself, yeah.
Yeah, really.
So, we don't worry about that.
You know-
Just make it taller.
There you go.
Go up with it.
So back to the, back to this question, did you approve that?
We didn't officially, but we-
Could you say something for Laura?
We can, I guess.
Yeah, no, I would, I would, I'll make a motion that we approve the town clerk, an assistant town clerk, sending out a notice of the June twenty-fifth Articles of Agreement, article, or voting articles for town residents' information.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm in.
Okay, so we did it officially.
Okay, thank you. I hate to go wasting three reams of paper without an official okay.
This is kind of important, though, it's one of those things that, an awful lot to do it every time, but right now, just getting started.
You know, it seems like a bad way to start things off.
People have such a little bit of interest in this.
Exactly, they need to have-
For the amount of money.
That's what worries me, you know, this kind of mandated merger, you know, no one really cares.
Nobody has fought it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're in different amount, or they're-
Yeah, but they did, I mean, everybody who showed up at all those meetings, and those of us who lobbied the legislature for an extension, you know, they didn't, as of now, we didn't really need an extension, and I think some of the people who wanted an extension really wanted an opportunity to see if there was some other way to do this.
Well, and I know, you know, part of it was, like, from Patrick's point of view, an extension would have given the town's time to really, you know, so things would have been so rushed, you know, just, you know, the hurry up, hurry up.
But it did work, you know.
It seems to, yeah, and these are important, because that's basically how the New Union District is going to function for the next few years, so you would think.
People should at least know what the legis, what our legislature has thrust upon us.
Yeah, and there are changes in there that affect the leasing of the school to the New Union District, so that's different from the state default articles, so those are important to us.
Yeah, and it is good that, you know, from, from when this all started to now, there have been concessions, because you remember at the beginning, they said, oh, no, we can't do a lease, but then it didn't turn out.
Do you know if, with these articles, have they resolved the board, and what the board will be going forward?
They have, that's why they, that's why they pulled it, they pulled the first one, because they decided not to.
So, just-
So that they're, they're going with five, two, two, one.
So five for Hardwick?
Five for Hardwick, two for Green, two for Woodbury, one for Standard.
Okay, so there's a, they need, and then the original default articles, it was four for Hardwick, one for each of the other towns, so, you know, basically, the smaller towns would be outgunned, you know, outvoted theoretically, you know, someone from Hardwick could go differently, but, but it would, you know, would have been a block, that would have meant that there wouldn't be much that the other towns could do if Hardwick, you know, chose people, so, good. But that's, that's another article that has to get voted on right now, so if it doesn't get approved, then it goes back to the default.
Which is two, 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 which Hardwick doesn't like, of course, because Hardwick only having two, and everybody else having two, that's certainly unfair.
That would only be for two, that would only be for two years.
That's for the first two years anyways, but that, but if we couldn't come up with another one, then they'd have to try something else, or else stay with the two, 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 and that's like, it's not really fair either.
Right.
Is Chris coming?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Did you get my email?
We did, and both Brian and I kind of agreed, so, yeah, so we'll just go, we're only just talking about it.
Don't ask, don't tell, right.
So, oh, Diana?
Yeah.
Did you hear back from Kim Silk about the-
No.
No.
That building, no, I didn't.
So, my, my thinking is, is that we haven't, if we, we should have some kind of input from Kim before we agree to this, so we'll just table it.
Right, yeah, there's nothing you can do, unless he goes there and says it's dangerous. So, yeah, did we have, did you have the-
No, no, not, not, I'm talking about the Humane Society.
Oh, okay, 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 no, I didn't hear back from him on that either.
That was my, my thinking was that if we-
It's a pretty standard contract, the same one.
I know it's standard, but it seems like we had to at least get his okay.
Okay.
So, make sure he's going to continue for us.
We reappointed him, so, he said he was okay with that.
Oh, yeah, he already agreed to that.
So, just to explain what I was just talking to Diana about, the next thing on our agenda is a contract with the Central Vermont Humane Society, and our animal control officer, Kim Silk, we haven't heard back from him on any thoughts that he has with the contract, so I'd like to have his input before the select board agrees to, to the contract and signs it, so.
Okay, so we've got time.
We've got time, so we'll-
The contract period is actually calendar year 2019, so they're obviously not in that much of a hurry to get it done.
Yeah, so we'll table that for the next meeting, and hopefully we'll hear back from him.
Yeah, you may want to drag him out of the line, he was in the other day talking, got something, I don't know if he understood that or not, that he needed, that he came to come in and talk to us.
Yeah, I, you know, I, for me, if he had, because I know Diana sent it to him, and she, you know, asked him for his input, and, so she hasn't heard, if she had, then, then we would have, we would have had his input, and I mentioned the meeting, but it was pretty late when I first contacted him about it, and I know he's a lot busier than, than he used to be.
Yeah, he's okay with it.
Yeah, so, so we'll have that on the agenda for our next meeting.
I haven't heard anything back from him about the dog list either.
Okay, yeah.
So, that may be something to mention if he's here anyway.
So with that, that's the end of our agenda.
Holy cow, look at that. Now, Paul here, we're done early.
So, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, we're done.